I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel, here. Crystal Regan?
Here.
Kristi Hilton?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Here, barely.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Mark Bouchard?
Here.
Alright, thank you. I'd like to amend the agenda under five for new business, or for the fire department vehicle purchase. That's under new business for five. Did you get that, Crystal? Okay. And oh, I wanted to mention too, Crystal's gonna be leaving us. She's been doing our videos since, I don't know, since we've had TV. And we have Madison back there, a high school student being trained right now. So, hi Madison. She didn't say hi. She's probably embarrassed back there.
Still in training.
Okay. Bill's payable, please. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $141,974.04.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any discussion on anything? Harry Nun, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Following the amended agenda...
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't do a vote on that either.
No.
I'm sorry, I'm half here, I'm sick.
So, I would like to make a motion to postpone new business two, three, and four, and add new business number five, fire department vehicle approval.
Support.
Thank you. Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Alright.
So now that we messed up the video back there, I'm sorry about that, you guys.
I'm, uh, yeah, okay. Okay, next we have public comments. Any public comments? Okay. Oh my god, I know, I'm not feeling well myself. If you've got a sore back, you just can't get comfortable either. Doesn't matter if you're standing or sitting or what.
No, I had fusion of four and five.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Six months. Anyways...
Can I get your name and address for you, sir?
Mark Fazora, 9034 Field Road.
Mark, can you tip your...
Up.
There you go.
Better?
That's better, yes.
Okay. Okay, I've been dealing with the building department and already on the problem with the old Hawke's Dump. Lot of activity going on there right now. And they're violating zoning ordinance 2017. And I've been told it should bump to the state. Well, the state... I called today and they hadn't heard nothing, so they're gonna send someone out. Now, according to our ordinance, it's supposed to have 80 acres. The way they set it up is so no one could have it in the township, it looked like, the ones that set the zoning ordinance up. They have to have 80 acres. They're supposed to be 1,200 feet away from residential lot line, which are right against, or zoning are right against it, my property line. And they're supposed to be 1,500 feet away from a dwelling. Well, they're closer than that to my house. And some of the houses on Fruit Road. So I think we should start enforcing this. Yeah, we've seen a few rats running out of there today when they were zoning around, yeah.
What are they bringing in there, Mark?
It's compost coming from unit they got down on 14 Mile. And they're glad to bring it out here. North American Concrete's bringing it out here. We have a lot of pictures.
Say it again, what is it that they're bringing?
They're bringing compost that's half decayed. And it's not finished decaying. And it's got wood and everything else, which there's DEQ. There is logs on it.
Yard waste?
It looks like yard waste, but it's got logs. Anything they dumped in it, it's in it. There's no rhyme or reason to what they're dumping.
That's the stuff in the back? That's the stuff in the back, right.
We can print some pictures off if people want them on what's going on.
Is this the first time they've dumped?
They've been doing it for about two months steady.
About two months?
And anywhere from 100 yards to 500 yards a day. They're pulling it in in gravel trains.
How many yards would you estimate of compost are there right now?
I bet you 15,000 yards, 20,000 yards. You know, gravel train hauls, that stuff, they're probably hauling 38 yards.
Okay.
Do we know who the owner of the property is?
Yeah. I've talked to a billion inspector about it and a couple people about it several times. And truthfully, we have a file on this property. I'm not exaggerating, it's about eight, 10 inches thick. And it's the old Hawke's Dump. And I'm trying to get a handle on it myself. I would assume that it was a brown field.
Yeah.
But it never, I don't think it never was from what I can decipher.
It has no leach system on it and it still, it gives off, it's giving off methane gas, which is a bad combination with composting.
Right. And I've even reached out to the county. And of course, I haven't really gotten any response with them yet about maybe making it a Brownsfield or doing something with it. Basically, this property has probably 25, 30 feet buried garbage from the old garbage dump that's been, you know, that Clay Township and the surrounding area is used for many years.
Yeah, it's about probably 15 feet, 18 feet. I imagine they didn't go into the clay.
Yeah, I don't know how deep it is.
Yeah, right in there, that's about what it would be.
But it is an issue. And it's something that we need to address hopefully sooner than later. Because like I say, I mean, it's all dumping. I personally, I don't think it's being... I know nowadays, they have different regulations for dumps. You know, you gotta be monitored and all this stuff. And that's not being done on this property.
Well, there were wells on there. A few of them put in in 99.
What's that?
Scientific Management did put some monitoring wells in
Really?
back in 99.
99?
You got the booklet on that? That Scientific Management?
Yeah, I can find out.
If you don't have it, I got a copy, I can make copies of.
Management, 99, okay.
But the thing is, is Freedom Hill got in trouble. I'm thinking, trying to think of the contractor. Might have been Dan's brought in a bunch of material over there. And it was just dirt and they got in trouble. I think it was $500,000 worth of damage. Now, who's gonna pick up the cost of that is what...
Right.
Property owner don't have no money.
No, I know.
So...
Well, there's money, if it's declared a Brownsfield, there is cleanup money available through...
Well, at that point then, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be fenced and...
Yeah.
You know, nothing done with it. You know, the owner's not gonna be able to do anything at that point.
Right.
Which he shouldn't anyways.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see what we can do on it, Mark.
Yeah, as I say, we're gonna have to step on it.
Alright.
You guys leave your contact information for any of our trustees before you leave in case they wanna get in touch with you for any other information.
Yeah.
Mark, how big would you say that the neighbor's property is?
It's 10 acres.
It's 10 acres?
Yep. And it's supposed to, under our ordinance, we can shut it down, you know, because it's supposed to be 80 acres. It's had no site plan review on it or nothing for what he's doing.
Zone light industrial.
Right, but you gotta have a site plan approval, just like everything I did.
Yep.
And I think that's it. Unless someone else got something put in on... You know, if you wanna say anything about fire hazard, you know. It is.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep, right here.
Does anybody else have any public comments? Yeah, one second, Sandy's almost done.
Good evening.
Turn around, Sandy, everyone's watching on TV.
No, they're not, she's on there. They're on the podium.
I'm Wanda Eady, 1506 Market Street, Algenack.
I'm Marilyn Gina, 2240 Michigan Street, Algenack.
The Historical Society of Michigan presents several rewards annually to groups and individuals in our state for their outstanding work. The Algenack Clay Historical Society was selected this year as Local Society of the Year. A group of us went to Hope College in Holland on September 22nd for the annual banquet and conference and received the award, which reads "The State History Award Presented to the Historical Society of Michigan, to Algenack Clay Township Historical Society, for local societies, recognizing the exceptional achievements in preserving and advancing Michigan history." This will be displayed at the Maritime Museum. Hundreds of volunteers throughout the state work tirelessly every single day to preserve and display their history. And we are very, very proud to be leader of that group. Thanks to the Township of Clay, the city of Algenack, and all of our citizenry for your endless support. Otherwise, this could never, ever have happened. So we want to thank you very much and we will continue to preserve our amazing history. And just as a little plug, we have a fundraising Halloween open house at Mike and Jill Bembas's house on the 21st. It's $5 and tickets can be bought at the Maritime Museum. And bring something for the food bank. And we have our annual spaghetti dinner on the 24th. Both are October. And it's at the St. Catherine Activity Center from 4:30 to 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your award.
Yeah, it's a great group. Yeah, they make great spaghetti. I, yeah. The secret's in the sauce and good desserts, too.
Is it spaghetti or is it mustard?
No, it's real spaghetti.
Oh, I'm there if it's real spaghetti.
Yes. But yeah, they do a, they do a great job. And I'll tell you what, if you ever go to one of their meetings, it's a hoot. They have a good time there, they really do. Any other public comments? Harry Nun. Consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the board meeting of October 2nd and synopses. Reports consisting of check reports, September assessing, building and zoning, code enforcement, fire and police reports. Notice, the planning member list, the zoning member list, just letting us know who is up for reappointment. Communication, Fire Department resignation, Dustin Curry. Request clerk and treasurer attend an MTA accounting workshop on November 29th for $111 per person.
Support. Okay, we have motion of support. Any questions or anything on any of that stuff?
Yes, I would like to call attention to the planning member list, if you can find it. But I'll just tell you briefly what I'm concerned with. Mark Bouchard over here is listed as, is not listed as the board rep.
Yeah, he should be the board rep.
And the dates are wrong because he's an elected official. I think it should be till the...
Term.
The term, the term of office. So I'd like to see us get a correction to that.
Okay, thank you, we'll have to do that.
I believe that because he was previously appointed.
Right, I understand that.
That was his term then, so that's, she just didn't update it.
Right.
Right, but it should be...
And should be listed as board member.
Because mine on the ZBA is listed, you know, as the four-year, you know, term of election, so...
Alright, we'll tell Cindy Babish.
Just, just a little note. Like to do things correctly.
Yes, you do, thank you.
You done, Joanne?
Anything else?
Yeah, can I get a little clarification on a few, on the check registry?
Yes.
Check number 29271, RE/MAX First.
Yes.
Is that for the island?
Yeah.
Yes.
Property?
Yep. That was the board-approved one, yep.
Yep, and then number 29256, Tashmune Marina. Is that one of the police or...
The Frag Mities boat.
That's the Frag boat?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more comments, questions? Harry Nun, all in favor of the consent agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Supervisor's report. And I must apologize, I've been sick for, I don't know how long. It's really knocked me out. I was out most of the week last week and I didn't come to work today. Well, for about 10 minutes. I went to see a doctor, he gave me a Z-Pak and everything, but it's kicking my butt, that's for sure. Last week, we, we, the auditors were here all last week and then three weeks before that. And they've done most of their work, at least most that they need to be done now. Lee or anyone didn't come today, did they?
No.
Okay, there was an issue. They weren't sure if one person might show up to pick up a couple loose ends this week. But they're gonna be calling us and scheduling to come and give us a report on our audit on one of our December meetings. So, once they get it all wrapped up. I'm not sure which one, yeah, I gave them the two dates and they gotta fit it in with all their other municipalities that they represent also. So, and as Chris pointed out, we did get the purchase offer on the Columbine property signed. And that was the deposit for it. And they did, we did put in the changes in it from that was suggested by our attorney. And now I've been starting to work with, setting up a timeline, how exactly, you know, forgetting all the permits in line. Actually been talking with the DNR Trust Fund and I got a lot of documents to go through that. And there's gonna be some steps that we have to do to, you know, to secure this grant. And we are gonna have to have the, or ask our planning commission to amend the Parks and Rec plan to include this in our Parks and Rec plan. And we gotta get some environmental studies done. And we are gonna have to hold a public hearing and properly advertise it and all that stuff. And I was hoping to have that done now, but I've been just too under the weather to do that. But, so, we're gonna be busy doing a lot of that stuff and getting it all organized and everything. Gotta write narratives and everything else. I got a lot of information on it and it should go pretty quick. Also did wanna mention too, I forgot my last week's, or last meeting supervisor's report. The Crispin Drain, where this is gonna be on the Blueways, Crispin Blueways. The GLRI, the EPA people that spearheaded that project, they did have a crew there doing some monitoring and some studies to get a, see how much this approved the year before. I have not received that yet, but verbally they said that they are pleasantly surprised on the results. And I wasn't aware that they're gonna do that. You asked me about, you know, the frags on there. And they actually did it themselves. They treated it one last time mid-September. They didn't have to do that much. It was not, only a few spots where they're bad, but they did cover the whole project area. And so, they're surprisingly, you know, happy of what's going on. We have heard comments that, you know, this time of year is full of aquatic plant growth and everything. And that's gonna happen. It is a habitat restoration. You know, the, how it was planned, you know, you have sloping banks underwater between six inches and a foot, foot and a half. And that's, because that's where most of your plant life is and your aquatics, you know, species is for breeding and feeding and all that. Then in the middle, they cut it to about four feet deep. And it varies wherever it goes. But on those shelves, that's where, you know, it's for exactly that, for getting plant life going in the lily pads. And it's all the dragonflies and...
Frogs.
Frogs and tadpoles and everything, that's what they like, so... So I just wanted to mention that. Upcoming events, we are, we do have our yoga class still going on. It's Tuesdays at 6:30 at Millside Elementary. And then there's $10 for drop-in rate. And Wednesdays, we have our Zuma Fitness class at 6:30 at Millside also. And that's also a $10 rate to drop in. We are going to, has Cindy said anything to you guys? I know we're going to do a phase two of this. I'm not sure if this is same nights or what. But she's gonna follow it up with some more classes and everything. So I don't have that information with me right now. October 21st, same night as, or day as, Historical Society's open house. Harson's Island's doing their annual Halloween party on Stewart Farm in their, on the barn. And this has become a pretty good event over there. And they do it to raise money for, what's it for? Is it the readers?
They're historical.
It is historical, I wasn't sure if, yeah, it is historical.
Because it's at Bob Williams.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if it's the library or the Historical Society. For the Historical Society. It charges $10 for adults and one to five-year-olds are free. But you get a lunch, hayride, there's a bounce house there. They do a scavenger hunt. They do face painting, there's a candy scramble. They have free cotton candy and they have a big pumpkin. You guess the weight and the winner wins something. And I know our police and fire departments are going to have a presence there. Presence there, and not presence, but they're gonna be there. And there's gonna be a craft table for kids to do crafts and pumpkin decorating. And then the following week, on October 28th, is our scarecrow festival next door in the park. I know we've been getting sponsors together for it and everything, but it's coming along pretty good. We have a scarecrow contest. You can make your own scarecrow with cash prizes. We have a muskrat. I'm not sure, oh boy, I got, got a muskrat category, a robotics category. I know we contacted a few of the robotics clubs. We have, I know one for businesses category and one for families category. And, but we have a scarecrow contest. We have make your own scarecrow because we got all the stuff there to make scarecrows. People come and make, you know, we have old clothes and straw and everything. Make your own scarecrow and take it home with you. If anybody has any old clothes you wanna get rid of, the more holes, the better. Bring them over. We're gonna have all kinds of kids games, a dog costume contest going on. And I know there's some prizes for that. And what else do we have? We're gonna have a great DJ there. And there'll be a lot more stuff. I know Combe County Crafts Trailer or Craftmobile's coming. And they get a bunch of old materials, actually from industrial-type materials from the city. And old material and everything, it's all second-hand stuff. And they come and they, for the kids to do crafts with it. I guess they get pretty, pretty, a lot of imaginative, imaginary stuff going on. I'm sick, I'm sorry. But, huh?
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up. That's about it. If you have any question, or if you guys are on Facebook, go ahead and like Clay Township Parks and Rec. If you have any questions, get ahold of Cindy Babish and our building department, too, so... Alright, thanks a lot and sorry.
The word you were looking for was creative.
Creative, thank you. I'm only half here. Okay. New business. We have resolution 201732, Burnman Flowers authorize Section 125. You wanna talk about that?
So Section 125 is the premium-only plan that allows our employees to pay their premiums towards healthcare expenses that, before taxes come out. For the IRS, we have to go ahead and adopt this to be able to do that before taxes. That saves them a little bit of money from the FICA and saves us a little bit of money as well. Because we also don't have to pay on anything if it's before tax. So it's in the best interest of both the employees and the employer. So I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 201732, authorizing Section 125.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion on that? Harry Nun, was this something that the staff?
This is something we currently have. Just when we moved all of our benefits over to Burnman Flowers a few meetings back. This is just something else we're moving over so they can take care of it all together. It doesn't cost us anything.
We have to approve it at this level so the IRS, so it's basically so they don't have to pay taxes, IRS rule.
Beneficial to the staff, though.
Yep, yep, both sides.
Yep, and us, too. Because we gotta match what they have to pay. Win-win. Yep.
That was a big, lots of stuff to read in that thing.
Oh, yeah, lots of.
Well, that was the whole summary plan description. So, yes, a lot of legal definitions and language in there.
So nothing's changing from what they have now? It's just who the provider is?
Who the agent is that handles it.
Yeah.
Need a roll call.
Yep. Any more discussion? Do we get a motion?
Support, yep.
You did, okay, roll call.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Two, three, and four, to reappoint some members on our planning and zoning board, it's been postponed, and I do have two more left out on here. If anybody is interested in, in serving on one of our, our planning commission or our ZBA, please let me know. How it works, I have to, the supervisor approves, I guess, or recommends, and then the whole board, voga or nay, basically hires them, and it is, what do they make it, it is a paid position, I mean, you're not going to get rich, that's for sure.
No, they do $40 a meeting, I believe.
$40 a meeting?
Yeah.
So, if anyone's interested, shoot me an email or let me know.
Yep, three weeks till our next board meeting?
Yeah.
November 6th is the next meeting.
Okay.
If we can get anybody interested by them, that'd be great.
All right. Sounds good.
Beautiful work.
So a once-a-month type thing?
Yeah, I don't care if it pays me or not.
Right. They're good boards. Twice, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's twice a month, depending on how busy we are, especially in the summertime, we have a lot of...
For planning.
Yeah, the planning portion of it, yeah.
ZBA once a month, if there's something on the docket.
All right, thanks, Mark. Next, we have a vehicle purchase for the fire department. I was in about 10 minutes today, and Chief Rose says, hey, Artie, I got all the information, blah, 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 for the, by the truck, and he says, well, you know what, if you don't do it tonight, it's going to be three weeks, so write it up and we'll amend the agenda. If anyone's uncomfortable with it, we can always postpone it, but, want to come up, chief? I think, he's got, what, three quotes?
I apologize for bringing it to you so late.
Oh.
No problem.
All right.
As you know, we have that excursion, it's 17 years old, excuse me, and it has 139 miles on it.
139,000?
139,000.
Rough.
Excuse me.
Rough.
Rough miles.
Rough miles.
We need something on the mainland side to be able to pull the vehicle, or the trailers that we have, which we don't with that vehicle.
Did they tell you how long it would take for the vehicle to come in?
About eight weeks.
Eight weeks, okay. This is a budget item, I'm trying to, where'd our quote come from? You're recommending the Chevy, right?
Yes.
And these were all priced through the state, correct?
Yes.
So it was the...
It already went out for bid.
Minimum bidding process.
Where's, where's the final?
Where are we getting it from?
Oh, cost per vehicle, okay, I got it, 45. And this is a budget item, we budgeted 50,000 in the budget, this is about $5,000 below that, so. So that's...
No, it's 48.08.
Oh, is it 48?
I assume it's 48.08.
48.08 out the door?
I'm sorry.
48.08 out the door?
It's...
Taxes included?
Taxes, you don't pay taxes, we're a municipality. It is 45,08, uh, 45,008 dollars out the door.
What is it, five years, 60,000, or as far as the warranty is concerned?
I saw on the here...
I think it's like 39.
39,000.
Okay, so it's type O R G.
That's wrong.
This is 45.
Yeah, it's 45.
So what's the right number?
Once you get the truck, are there going to be an additional apparati, apparati or apparatus?
We would like to try and set it up as the same as the pickup truck that we have on the island.
You going to be cannibalizing off of one to the other, or?
No.
Same equipment or buying new?
We would replace it with new.
How much is that going to cost?
As far as lights and...
Yeah, yeah.
We're looking at about $2,000 for light bar and emergency lighting on it.
So that's still within the budget?
Yep.
Okay.
And we're going to have to get some little stickers for the back, and Clay Township buys it.
Yep, we'll stripe it. The other thing, too, is we can take the old Tango One, the excursion, and we can put that up for sale, too.
Right.
Take some of the money from that, sale of that, and put it towards it also.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me.
That was unexpected.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire department utility vehicle purchase, the amount of 45,008 dollars from...
Where's it, Grand Rapids?
Burger Chevrolet?
They're on the Michigan bid.
Okay, we have a motion, any support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion?
This is going to be a one-time purchase from our, from their budget?
Yeah.
So there's no financing involved?
Right.
Badly needed.
The other one's not so easy on the eyes anymore, is it?
No.
Not so easy on the back?
Yeah. We wrote in it last week, and it's...
Is it a little rough?
It's really rough.
I think we should convert that to our township car.
Oh, lovely. I don't know, Artie, they both kind of need to go.
Yeah, nah. One other thing, too, it's kind of off the topic, but we're going to check into selling our, our one ambulance that was, yeah, so, we should start making motions on that. I believe we have an offer out for about 15,000, which is pretty close to what we paid for. So, okay, we have a motion and support, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Motion passes, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Except for business, board member comments. Mark, how we doing down there, got anything for us?
Well, I'm sorry to hear about your ailment there, Artie.
Me, too.
It's, I know it's been, I know, I can't get any, well, I guess I...
Kind of like sliding over.
I got all kinds of room.
I had a couple in the neighborhood talking about Frag Mighty spraying on the marsh, and I know that's a DNR project, and I don't know if it was posted or not, I didn't hear anything about it until she brought it to my attention.
What marsh?
St. John's Marsh.
Yeah. I don't think there was anything done there. I don't know, did they see him?
Yeah, they saw him, they saw him spraying, so this is what they told me, and I said, well, I know it's DNR, and they're supposed to post it and let us know, but I didn't hear anything about it, so I'm just checking with you if we...
I can, I can call John Darwin and Terry McFadden to find out, but I, I don't, I didn't hear of anything.
How would they spray over there unless they had...
I don't know.
Normally, it's the helicopter.
Right, normally they do helicopters, they haven't done that for about two, three years.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't notice it, and I go by there all the time, but whatever, so.
DNR.
She was worried about her tomato plants getting whacked, I guess. It's the Roundup, what was the issue?
Yeah.
There's a chemical in the Roundup, according to her, that has been outlawed, outlawed in ten states.
No, it's not, it's glyphosate, it has never been outlawed.
Not here in Michigan, but in other states, according to her, so. I didn't...
Okay, thanks.
That's it.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay, I'll find out. Okay. How you doing, Joanne?
I have nothing at this time.
You're kidding?
What? No, I don't.
Okay.
No ZBA, no nothing.
All right.
I'm catching your cold, I think.
Yeah, I guess so. Cindy?
Elections coming up, we're always looking for election workers, so if you're interested, does require a day's training down at the county office for about four hours, and election day is a long day, but let the clerk's office know if you're interested in working for the election, and I would just like to congratulate our Blue Water Area Conference Champions, our Algonac Muskrats. Nice game on Friday.
Mm-hmm. Go Muskrats.
Chris is down there.
Yeah, I know. I should have started down there, huh?
I don't know.
Sandy?
Just wanted to remind everyone, the little kiddies are in school, and to pay attention to the school buses and the red flashing lights, heard a couple complaints about that around town, so just wanted to make everyone conscious of that again. Had the opportunity to ride out to Richmond and watch our Algonac Muskrats win that B-WAC title. Go Muskrats.
Chris?
Well, we're jumping into fall, and it's my favorite time of year.
Mine, too.
I just want to encourage and remind the duck hunters and deer hunters in our area to be safe, first and foremost. Wear your life jackets, wear your harnesses and your stands, be courteous to one another. I know we've got a lot of cross mingling in some of our wetland areas, so be courteous to one another, be respectful, and only leave your footprints.
Thank you. Kristi?
I've got nothing.
Okay.
Wait, what, no muskrat?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean...
Yeah, well, Chris didn't do the muskrat thing. I, yeah, I got my, I was going to put it on, but new muskrat B-WAC champion t-shirt hanging on you guys. Yeah, sweet, good stuff. They played stellar. I tell you what, they're D, I mean, they just all, all the way around the ball, they really did.
Played with speed, didn't they?
Yep.
And they swarmed.
Yep, they did, they definitely swarmed that ball, and good job to them, and congratulations. I'd like to also congratulate our Algonac Clay Historical Society again, that's a great award they have. Tell you what, that's, that's a fun group, and they do such a good job, and they take a lot of pride in it, which is great. It's always fun to cooperate with them and do joint ventures with them, and, oh, yeah...
Wish I would have known, we could have made them part of our agenda instead of just having some public comments.
Yeah, well, I saw the article in the paper, I posted on Facebook and stuff, I was in the Portland paper three or four days ago, but yeah, it was, it was all good stuff. Yeah, we'll have them read that next time. Okay.
Can I amend my no comment?
Sure.
On, what was it, this Thursday, this past Thursday, the four of us went up to this grant township to the St. Clair County chapter of the MTA to listen to a guest speaker who happened to be Ken Cummings, and there were, I would say, how many, Cindy, 20, 25 people there from the various townships?
Yes.
And we were well representative, represented as Clay, and so I found it informative, and it was nice to meet with the other people from the various townships. So, chief went, and Cindy, and Kristi, and myself.
Good. You went up there, too, Chris?
No.
Yeah.
Kristi.
Oh, Kristi, okay, that's what I thought, oh, I'm sorry.
Kristi.
Chris O'Regan was supposed to come, but he was unavailable at the last minute, due to other obligations, so we took the chief with us instead.
And Artie was sick.
Yeah, I was sick.
So you didn't make it?
No, I know it. I'm sure I was well missed, huh?
But it's always good, I think, for all of us to attend things like that.
Yeah.
As well as the meet, the workshop you two are going to, I'm all for that.
And, oh, I, I do have to get my last dig in, because our last meeting, you know, I put my Michigan State hat on and got all kinds of, they're never going to win.
Nobody cares about that.
No one cares about that.
But I care, Artie.
Yeah, I'm glad you care, Kristi. I'm glad.
It's a surprise.
Okay, other than that, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Okay, anyone who's going to object, let's get out of here. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.